We're saving a little money here, we have a budget.
Is it on now, Chris?
Red light's on.
Does it say, does it say end recording?
It's stopped.
Okay. Well, folks, now we're live. It is 6:33. I'm Brian Sullivan, I'm the Chair of the Howard's Vote Appeals. And tell you, this meeting is on October 30th, 2024. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the vote appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts Zoning and Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary and attorneys presented a case, to inform the Chair if her protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding the case are requested to fill out an information form on the podium. So if you haven't, you want to speak regarding the case, there's a form there, I'm not quite sure, we probably should put it someplace else, but there's a form there which needs to have you sign, as far as just your name and, you know, contact information, so we know who you are. Okay? I'd like to have the Board identify themselves. Chris?
Chris Murphy.
Kenneth Dixon.
John August.
David Nonley.
Again, Brian Sullivan.
Attorney Donahue.
Okay. And Al, why don't you go ahead and call the first case?
Case number 2024-02, Coastline Construction, Inc., through their attorney James M. Norcross, Esquire. This property is located at 466 Route, Route Unit 1, Route 28. Assessors map, M, excuse me, Assessors map 13 parcel FBB1 in the IRM and CZ zoning district. The applicant has requested an extension for variance granted on February 8th of 2024 pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-52 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10.
Okay. I have a request for the continuance, and I'll have you talk in a moment, sir. And said, Dear Mr. Sullivan, on behalf of the applicant, Coastline Construction, Inc., I am writing to respectfully request a one-year extension for the variance granted by the zoning board appeals on February 8th, 2024. A copy of the variance is attached here, too. The applicant has encountered several delays and is unlikely to be able to begin construction prior to the current expiration date. Thank you for your assistance, and please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. Truly yours, James M. Norcross. Now, the guidelines, you know, for an extension, and we'll have you speak to this, is we're allowed to extend, I believe, I'm confident, just six months on a variance. So when the motion is made to, you know, grant an extension, it would be for just six months?
Yeah, totally understand that, that's fine.
Okay. And after that, if you can't accomplish the goals, then you'd have to reapply, you know, for the variance.
Understood.
Okay. So may I ask who's speaking?
Yeah, I'm Jack Wishart with Coastline Construction. Yeah, it's just taken a lot longer than anticipated to get everything all cleared up and all the red tape moved through, so we're requesting the extension and expect to get underway within the, within the extension, hopefully all going well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the extension? Okay. Al?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak in reference to this extension? Okay. Well, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of, were we going to give them an extension for six months? And we'll move right up the course on an appropriate extension decision.
Brian, you got to vote to...
I'm going to, I'm going to vote. But based upon doing an extension for six months, I'd like to hear all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Extension is approved.
You didn't vote to close the public meeting.
I apologize, thank you. Let's close the public meeting. All those in favor of closing the public meeting? Thank you. Appreciate it. Now we will vote again. All those in favor of the motion as stated?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Have a great night.
Now, after reading the statement, that anyone can let me know when a protocol is not being followed, I don't listen.
I try.
You did your best, okay? Next time, like, you know, just wave your hands or something, you'd be appreciated. In most of the cases, I have a draft form that I follow all the little rules here, but okay, motion approved. Al, you want to go ahead and read the next case?
Case number 2024-29, William Buckley and Beth Buckley care of David Linqua. If I mispronounce that, please correct me. 25, the property is located 25 Green Needle Lane, Assessors map M, map 4 parcel T2-5 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit 325-54A, actual 1A, 325-54A, 1B, alteration or extension to a single-family, no, excuse me, two-family residential structure, 325...
Second floor.
Second floor.
Not two-family.
No, it's written as two-family on this.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
And 325, attachment 3, table 3, height and bulk regulation to construct a second-floor addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-54, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6.
Okay, the, as far as relevant notices and so forth, the police and conservation departments submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. The Board of Health commented that a full set of floor plans is required for them to make, for them to make comments on the project. We have a letter from, in a butter, Vincent Costello of 21 Green Needle Lane, in support of the project, and I'd be happy to read that. To whom may concern, my name is Vincent Costello and reside at 21 Green Needle Lane, West Howard, 02671. My neighbors William and Beth Buckley of 25 Green Needle Lane have a hearing on October 30th. They are great neighbors, and I absolutely support their homes' alterations or extension. Cecile, yours, Vincent, and I can't remember, we read his wife's name, Costello. Now, in, let me see here, there were no other comments from other town apartments or butters. We, and I think the Board, of course, when the applicant makes his presentation, we'll get into this, but are you all receipt of an additional letter from GAF Engineering? Okay. Which we received that today regarding, you know, indicating what the, what the proper building height is based upon ground level. Okay, all right.
That was requested just recently, we asked the engineer to provide that.
Yeah, I know, I know, Rachel has been, had talked to you about it this, you know, last few weeks, and I'm glad today that you got it, got it to us and, you know, for the meeting. It's appreciated. Okay?
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, and once, as far as those who are going to, I'd like to have you identify yourselves and give your presentation.
Absolutely, I'm Ken David Plan, owner's agent and contractor. And to be honest, this is going to be a pretty short presentation because I can't pull up all the, all the information that I need on this laptop under this wifi, but it's a pretty straightforward case. I think you can all see that the existing dwelling at 25 Green Needle Lane actually needs all the setbacks. The reason why we're here today is because there was going to be a small addition on the front, which I believe is... Right at the entry door, the front entrance, we were going to add four feet to that. You could see it on the floor plan, that was an increase in coverage, but because of the angle of the house, it would take, if we add that four feet, that foundation will encroach on the window of the new master's house, as well as the window on the right side of the existing bedroom on the back corner. So that addition is not going to happen. We will still have a four-foot overhang on the second floor, but we're not increasing the footprint of the house at all. So we're only going to increase the height. It's a conforming height. Now, it's going to remain conforming, long we're done. And that's really it. I mean, we're not, we're not encroaching on, on any setbacks. We're not increasing any non-conformities. So it should be, I feel, should be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Questions? Chris?
You said on the side and back, is it conforming? Is it non-conforming?
The house is non-conforming, but we're, we're not doing any work within the non-conforming district.
So it'll remain non-conforming?
The house will remain non-conforming, but we aren't expanding on it, on any existing non-conformities whatsoever. All the work, all the work that is being done is, is in a conforming footprint.
Up and out front? And you're pushing it out front, right?
Just, just over the second floor. We've got to overhang the first floor just a little bit, but we're not going to increase the foundation on the first foot footprint, excuse me.
Oh, so will you, will you actually have a first level, or it'll be cantilevered out?
It's just going to be a three-foot cantilever on the second floor.
Okay.
Yeah. It's only got a cantilever on the front wall, only on that spot. Everything else is within the actual footprint of the home. Any more questions, Chair?
I have a question. Actually, I'm not sure if you've seen this from our building department, and it talks about the fact that the building coverage, the building coverage existing is 23.2%. Allowed to be 30. And then it says the building coverage proposed is 24.8, so that means you're expanding the building coverage, right, by that four feet?
We, we originally had proposed that, but that's not what's going to happen now. We're actually not going to increase the footprint on the first floor at all.
All right. Because then it gets to site coverage, and site coverage is non-conforming today, it's at 37.8%. And, Mr. Chairman, maybe you can help me with this, because it says proposed site coverage is going to be 39.4. That was all about the four feet?
Because we're adding the four feet in the front, correct? And I believe that's the reason why we're here.
Thanks for clearing that up. No other questions?
So is the plan that we were provided, been modified?
It includes the four foot, but we cannot do the fourth foot.
I would say, we need to approve it, I think. You need a plan...
I need a plan that's accurate.
What we're approving, you know, the, the original proposal.
So if, if we're not asking for any additional coverage, can't that just be a condition that we don't add the four foot additional?
I think you are asking for additional building coverage, if not site coverage, even though it's not conforming. But I think unless you want to start the process all over again with the building department and have to come to another meeting, whatever is approved here has to be what's going to be built. The drawings need to be stamped as approved, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, we can do a motion that says it's approved based on receiving a revised drawing, but I don't think...
I'm sure I can.
Then, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I would just prefer to go through with this plan then. I, I'd rather come back with a modification later on, but, I mean, we're, it's questionable, I think, whether we even need to be here at all.
Well, you do...
If we don't do the four-foot addition, I, I don't believe that we even have to have this approved. But I would, I would rather proceed with this plan, just in case we have to add a foot or whatever it might be after the engineers go through the property. I don't believe that's the case, but I'd rather just proceed with the plans that we have, if that's okay.
I think, from my perspective, any projection over the top, if it's over two feet, is going to count as a change to your, both your building and your site coverage, which is one of my questions, of whether that calculation discounted the two feet, but the, you know, the additional regulations, 325-18 says a balcony or bay window is limited to total length, to half the length of the building and not more than two feet out.
Right.
So once you get over two feet, it starts to change your site coverage calculation.
I, I understand that, Mr. August, but respectfully, it, we're not, what, what's going to happen on-site will not increase what we've already requested.
I hear you.
If anything, it'll go backwards, it'll improve the situation.
And, to be honest with you, I'm a, I'm a fan of the project, I'm just saying that I'm uncomfortable approving something that we already know is not going to be built exactly that way.
But I, I have, I have a right to reduce. I, I can't increase, but I have a right to reduce, even after the approval. So if, if, if you as a Board approve this project, I can improve the situation on the job, I just can't make it more detrimental. So, we're not, we're not asking for any, anything over what we've already requested.
Oh, I get you. So, but to my question, as I'm a stickler on the building coverage type things and everything, and actually it wasn't filled out in the application, I think Rachel pulled it off the table. You can discount the coverage for the two feet overhang. Do you know whether this calculation included that?
It does, yes.
Sure that it's been discounted for the two?
Hundred percent, yes, yeah. And, and, and I can tell you all with a hundred percent certainty that what we're going to do does not increase what we've requested.
And again, I'll state again, I'm a supporter of the project, but I, I don't have an issue with it, other than the documentation being accurate.
No, absolutely, I mean, it's, all of our work is at a conforming footprint. The only reason why we came initially was because of adding that four feet, but now with existing site conditions, what we're seeing is that we're going to improve that number, not make it more detrimental.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
If the Board votes to approve the project, obviously if, when you have a building permit issued, should there be changes in what you're going for a building permit, which the Building Commissioner or Building Inspector feels was not covered under the, the relief that you have, would receive tonight, then he would be suggesting back that you come back to the Board.
Understood.
All right. Now, the, in looking at proposal and what was being done here, I, I do feel the fact that, you know, granted would be consistent with, with Gale and Dietrich cases. We got intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, and I don't see where there've been any, no, there's been no new conformities which have been requested, you know, in this application. And I also don't see where it's a, really a problem for the, an issue with the neighborhood itself, and that's, everything is not, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so I'm, I'm fine with the project. I do have some questions regarding, what is your timeframe for construction?
We would like to apply for a current roadway.
Okay, so it, right now, you're looking to be, be in the ground on, at least by the first of the year?
Yes, correct, and, and our, our projected end date for this project is around the end of May 1st to June 1st.
After a decision is filed with town clerk, there'll be a period of 30 days after that before you can request a building permit?
Understood.
Okay, all right. And what is your, will you be able to maintain your construction vehicles on the lot?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And you have satisfied the issues on the building permit, I mean, as far as the height, you know, with the letter today? Okay. Al?
I have no questions.
All right. So the current, the current height, and let me just go back, the current height is how many square feet, how many feet high?
Eighteen point two, according to Rachel's...
Okay. And we're going to be going to 26.8, is that, 26 eight inches? Is that correct?
That's what it is.
Is that, is that 26 feet eight inches? Okay. Is there any additional questions for the applicant? Anybody?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience, in the public, that would like to speak to this application? All right, there's no one in the public. Chair asks for the applicant to make any final comments? All set? Okay. All right. And any additional questions from the, okay. All right, so I just want to go over the findings of facts and so forth on this case. We did receive a notice of appeal, an application, a petition for, you know, for the public hearing. We have a proposed condition site plan from GF, GAF Engineering dated 8/24. We also have existing proposed exterior building drawings from Northeastern Trade Service dated 7/19/24. We have also a letter from GFA Engineering dated October 29th, which reviews the proposed building height from average, average grade, which is the 26.8, which is within the conforming. Okay? Again, for the record here, additional, you know, those are the documents that were presented, findings of facts. Now, the lot is located in an IRM zone. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming regard to air requirements with 88, 33 square feet, and non-conforming frontage of 89.2 feet. The existing structure is pre-existing non-conforming regards to setbacks on the north, east, and south sides with which the proposed conditions will not be changed. The frontage setback is conforming at 29.9 and will not be changed. The existing building coverage will remain conforming going from 23.2 to 24.8 where 30% is allowed. The site coverage will remain non-conforming going from 37.8 going to 39.4, which is a minor change. The building height will remain conforming going from 18.2 feet, 18 feet 2 inches, to 26 feet 8 inches.
I think the, the letter from the engineer revises the existing height as well.
I missed that. Oh, 17.6. Okay, thank you. All right, so the building height will remain conforming going from 17 feet 6 inches to 26 feet 8 inches. There'll be intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity, no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, or congestion. The Board here, have I missed any findings of facts or any documentation which is part of this case? Okay. So what now regarding conditions for approval that we'll have for this case, it suggests we do have the standard proposal that, given this location, that between June 30th and Labor Day, there should be no demolition or exterior construction or new landscaping. Okay? That for life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not any public street or road. Subject to review and approval by the Board of Health on a full set of floor plans, and this, and a violation of terms and conditions of special permit would be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL. Chapter 48, Section 7 of the Howard zoning bylaws, as this may be amended from time to time. I'd like to make a motion to the Board that we accept these documents and find the facts and conditions of approval for this case?
Second.
Second, by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Voters six to, to no, to nothing? All right. I'd like to ask for a motion to close public hearing.
I move.
Second.
Dave and, okay, John, second. I'm sorry. Ken, John, second. Voting on this tonight, the Al, David Nonley, Chris Murphy, John August, and Ken Dixon. And the Chair will now entertain a motion to close discussion.
So move.
Second.
I'd like to vote on motion to close discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We didn't vote on closing the public meeting.
I think I did.
What'd you do?
Closing the public meeting?
He did.
Did we vote?
Yep.
Yeah, I did. But, thank you for, hey, listen, let's, you know, no, it's, nicely know that he did it right. Okay. And Al, I'd like to have a motion you can make of the case?
All right, case number 2024-29, William Buckley and Beth Buckley through their, through David Linqua. On the property located 25 Green Needle Lane, Assessors map 4 parcel T2-5 in the RH1 zoning district, the applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-541A and 325-54A1 and B. Altera, yeah, alteration to the, of the extension of the single-family dwelling, residential structure 325, attachment 3, table 3, height bulk regulation. Granting is consistent with the Dale and Gale and Dietrich and related cases as they may be a testification of one or more existing non-conforming, non-conformities rather, no new non-conformity and no new substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on pre-existing non-conforming lot. As the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Relief is expressly granted hereon too is denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there should be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping from June 30th to Labor Day of any year. For the life of the project, the approval of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not any public street or road. The subject to review and approve by the Board of Health is of this full set of floor plans. A violation of the terms and conditions of special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 7 of the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion by the Board? I'd like to see a gentleman vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion approved.
Excellent, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Have a great evening.
You, too. Well, me too, Al. Thought I watched your file, Bill, and all set.
Yeah, full confidence.
There you go. Okay, Al, can you call the next case?
Alright, case number twenty-two-four dash thirty. Kevin Gill Jr., care of William D. Crowell and Michael G. Donovan Esquire. The owners of the property located at thirty-five Pilgrim Road, assesses map fourteen parcel U-ten in an I-H-one zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, or in the alternative, a variance from three twenty-five fifty-four non-conforming structures and uses. Three twenty-five attachment tables, attachment two, table two, area regulation to raise and replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws three twenty-five fifty-four and fifty-two in Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-eight, sections ten and six.
Okay, the police and conservation departments submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. The historic commission reported that thirty-five Pilgrim obtained historic approval on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The Board of Health commented that a site plan showing the proposed septic system is required for them to make comments on the project, which they have not received. And all the comments from the town departments or butters were received. Were there any letters or butters that I'm not aware of? Okay. And chairman asked the applicant and representatives to introduce themselves and those helping you in presenting the case.
Thank you. I'm Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Court. My law partner, Mike Donovan, is seated against the wall. We have a number of representatives. So we have Kevin Gill seated beside me, he's the property owner, and his wife Heather is seated behind me, and then three representatives from Longfellow Building Company are here. The engineer and the project leader and his assistant are all here tonight.
Okay. Welcome all.
This property is located on Pilgrim Road, two houses behind Pilgrim Church, twenty-eighth Howard Court. So we submitted a copy of the assesses map just for your, to orient you, and I wanted to walk through the project with you for a moment. Keep in mind that when you look at the site plan, right, that north, if you look at the site plan here, north is towards Route twenty-eight. So you have to turn it sideways like this. I think Rachel, in her report, going this way. So when she says the southerly boundary, she thinks that the southerly boundary is the boundary along Pilgrim Road, right?
Okay.
It's not. You gotta turn it this way. The southerly boundary is towards the ocean. So I'll walk through what I think are the, are the correct setbacks and bounds. Just as an aside, if you've ever been down this road in the summer, right, especially in the spring and summer, and you get, you get to the, right past the church, there is a visual that I've never seen anywhere else in town, and it's that you look out towards the water, and the water is above the road, right?
Yes.
I don't know how that happens, but because it goes down a hill to the, the ocean, but when you get right there by their house, the water is, try it sometime, the water is above the road. If you can figure it out, let me know.
Okay.
Anyway.
You always bring an interesting fact to the table.
I was, I was, I was, you might appreciate, but it'll all be driving down.
Yeah, it's a very cool view.
And I hope your, your partner in years to come, you know, recognizes what you, your contribution to these meetings.
Trying to pave the way. I'm not sure I can come up with some of these things.
We're not sure he's not making them up either, just, you know.
There'll be a follow-up quiz in the next hearing to see if you did that and saw that. But, anyway, what we're doing is proposing to demolish and replace this pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. We did go to historic, the historic commission and vetted it through them extensively because this is a Tudor design, and they, they agreed that they would not impose a one-year demolition delay. And the, the style of this house is going not Tudor, which we hope that the, the neighborhood will be pleased with. It's gonna be gambrel, you see, from the building plans, and the building, the historic commission saw the wisdom of that and said, okay, it fits in with the streetscape more so than the Tudor does. So, that's not why we're demolishing and replacing it. It needs, it needs a total renovation, and it's more cost-effective to demolish and replace than it is to renovate, in our builder's estimation and my client's estimation. So what we're doing with the plan is, you notice that the existing garage towards the water, the south boundary, is four feet from that bound, and, and it shows on the larger plan also that I submitted. And we're making that conforming. We're moving it all north so that the proposed garage will be a conforming setback, sixteen feet in, so it'll be twenty feet. And then on the west side, towards Pilgrim Road, we are going from, we're making that conforming as well. So let me see where we are. I think she's on here. We're going from twenty-four. Twenty-four, right. We are, we are non-conforming at twenty-four point three. Rachel's calling it the south side, so that's why I'm trying to, I'm hesitating. That's the west side, is twenty-four point three, non-conforming. We're making it conforming. We're going another six feet almost, so it'll be thirty point six. So we're making two non-conforming setbacks conforming. Again, we, you don't see this very often, where you're making two non-conformities conforming. On the east side, let's call it the back of the house, we are reducing that one, but it's still conforming, so it's, it's going to twenty feet on that side. On the northerly side, and that garage is presently a detached garage, the new garage will be an attached garage, be part of the house. On the northerly side, towards the church, towards Route twenty-eight, it's presently eight feet, we're going to eight point one feet. So we're actually improving it, taking a little bit, a hair further back, but we're basically maintaining that along that side. So that existing non-conforming will remain, and we're going up, so we're putting more habitable space above, within the twenty-foot setback. So we need to be here. If we were making that side conforming, and we, and we're still conforming on building and site coverage, we wouldn't have to be here. We could do it as of right. But we need to maintain that side on the north. So, that's how the setbacks will play out, and the building coverage existing is twenty-one point five. We're proposing twenty-two point six, still well below the thirty percent maximum. The site coverage, existing twenty-eight point six, increasing five percent to thirty-three point nine, and, but it's still below the thirty-five percent max. So we're presently conforming both site and building, and we're going to remain conforming. We have submitted also the building and elevation plans, and the denial letter from the building commissioner referring this situation, this case, to you folks for relief. As they said, we've been to the historic commission, they have not imposed a demolition delay, and we will submit a septic plan with the Board of Health. Of course, we can't get our building permit until Board of Health approves a septic plan So we're asking that you grant the special permit this evening on the grounds that, under the Gale case, and our bylaw, because we're not coming any closer to that north side. Our bylaw says if you're not increasing the existing non-conformity, and you're going along the same line, even if you're going up, you're not, you're not going towards that lot line. So both the bylaw and the Gale case allow you to make a finding if you see fit, that there is, that this demolition and replacement will not result in a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic of the like. It will not create a nuisance, and there will be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. We would ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay. Want to have members, have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Who was he gonna ask any questions, since you brought the whole entourage? You gotta make him feel like they earned their keep.
You gotta earn their keep.
One of them's got the answer out.
Just confirming the assumption that the, the large increase in the site coverage, is that, that's because the driveway has to be longer and have the curve in it? That's, that's really just driveway nut. That was it. No questions.
What materials are used in the driveway? It's gonna be pavement, or is it gonna be stone?
It's proposed as asphalt.
Time frame?
You are gonna submit an article this year, right, for the town meeting about site coverage and driveways?
I have been trying to get that taken care of.
Thank you.
But, yes, that's.
It wouldn't apply here for new asphalt, though.
I understand.
No, I've made that request. What Attorney Crowell's referring to is that the board has that discussion, that we feel that the use of permeable material should only be counted as a fifty percent for, towards site coverage, as opposed, and want to encourage people to use more permeable materials, you know? So it's, that's our goal, and.
Like seashells and pea stone?
And stones so forth. You know, not rap, you know, any, any materials that don't coagulate, you know, like, the rap is considered to be permeable, it's fine the first week, but after running around a lot, it's, it, you know, it's becomes, you know, pavement. But we're trying, what, our goal is to have the, you know, that be in front of the town meeting at, at hopefully this next spring, you know, so we get that type of thing. And so it's been already drafted, something similar to that, not quite, has already been given to the, the planning board for review, as well as the town administration, I think, along with other articles, but that's one of our goals. Okay. So timeframe for the project?
You say spring of twenty-six? We, we would like to start demolition as soon as possible, so if we were approved tonight and we got through the appeal period, thirty days or whatever, and, you know, assuming everything goes fine with the Board of Health with the septic, we'd like to start demolition as soon as possible.
Can you maintain constructions, vehicles on the lot?
That'll be possible. You gotta take the hedge down, so we'll be using, unfortunately, the front yard to stay materials for the first three, four months, grain materials, we'll be able to stay on the lot. delivery trucks would be another issue, you know.
Right, that's understandable, that's.
They'll have a park, if they, if there's enough space there to speak around, they're not there for long.
Alright, so. Do you have this in front of you, 'cause I gotta make sure I do this right? Okay.
That's why I brought it up.
Alright, can I, I just, 'cause I was trying to follow you and listen at the same time and.
That's amended. That'll make it easier for you.
Apparently it might.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Ken wants to get out of here as soon as possible, so he made sure this.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Let's approve it while we're young. Alright, alright. Okay, alright, thank you. I have no further questions. Al?
I just have a comment. That must have been a beautiful home when that was built. Was it eighteen fifty-nine, eighteen seventy?
Yeah, the town has it as the nineteen twenties.
Oh, that late, okay.
But I'm not sure how accurate that is. I mean, when we first bought the home, it was our plan to renovate it and keep the existing home, and we had some struc-, you know, structural engineers go through, and there's just some, we have five little kids, our youngest is ten, the, our oldest is ten, the youngest is one, and just to get the house to a place where it was safe and structurally sound and everything just was really almost impossible. So it was, we live in an antique back in Hingham where we are now, we have a lot of appreciation for that. It wasn't our preferred path, but that's kind of where we landed.
I actually, upon looking at that property, though, it's in desperate need of a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately. Anyway, there are no further questions, just an observation, that's it.
Okay, is there any in the public who doesn't, isn't building and involved with this project that would like to, of course, you can all speak, but anybody like to speak in behalf of this project? Okay? Alright, hearing, hearing no one. Any additional questions from the board so far?
No.
Alright, so I just wanna go over information submitted as part of the application, which would be incorporated in the decision. We have a notice of appeal and application and petition for public hearing. We have a proposed site plan from Longfellow Design Build dated eight twenty-one twenty-four. We have proposed construction and floor plans from Longfellow Design dated eight fourteen twenty-four, and also from Attorney, Attorney Crowell, we have a project narrative and supplement to the petition. The findings in this case are as follows. The lot is located in I-1 zone. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming regardless of air requirements with ten thousand four hundred square feet, and non-conforming frontage of ninety-four point seven feet. The existing structure is, okay, it's pre-existing non-conforming, we got a setbacks on the south and west side setbacks, am I correct here? And the existing garage is non-conforming on the east side setback, or am I doing that wrong?
Yeah, that's, is.
At the east side, it should be the.
Disconforming.
Disconfor-, no, no, on the, on the existing structure.
No, no, it's non-conforming.
Okay. But I will then incorporate later the correct numbers in, in the decision, okay? Very, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification on the site plan.
You said a date of P-21/24, and I'm noticing on the plan, there was a revision on the P-21/24, but down at the bottom, it is a date of 10/24/24. That's really the current...
I don't, I don't see that in my, I have an 8/21/24 plan. Can you come up and tickle this plan that I'm gonna stamp, make sure it's a correct plan? Appreciate your pointing that out to me. So this is the plan I have. Okay. What, is there, is an updated plan for this?
We did an updated plan just because we had the choose.
So we don't need that one.
Okay.
So we have to stick with what we submitted, and that's what they're gonna approve, and we have to build what's shown on...
Yeah, so we're good with this plan. Just wanna make sure that there's, all right.
Could I, with Rachel's chart, to see if I agree with what Mr. Dixon has given you?
Absolutely. Want to pass that over to...
So...
I just changed the directions.
That's what I did. So I said east, south, west, north.
Great, great.
Great, great. And then, what's this?
You actually are decreasing.
Decreasing.
You're not increasing, you're decreasing on non-conforming.
That's what I thought. That's why I circled. Great job, Mr. Dixon.
He really wants it. I'd really get out of here.
What is the current, what is the current frontage setback? I have 29.9, is that correct? The current one? And it's going to 30.6? 24.3?
24.3.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll be... And we'll be 30.6, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, the existing building coverage, we remain conforming, going from 21.5% to 22.6%, where 30 is allowed. The site coverage, we remain conforming, going from 28.6, we remain conforming, going to 33.9%, where 35% is allowed. Proposed building height will be conforming at 29.5 feet. There will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, and no new non-conformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. The conditions of approval the board will impose be as follows. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, et cetera, and we'll get on that full thing, 30, June 30th, Labor Day. Life of project, all construction vehicles be parked on the applicant's property, and not in any public road or street. Subject to review or approval of Board of Health on septic plans, and the standard terms on violation of terms of the Howard zoning bylaws. Have I included all the documents and findings and facts, folks? Okay. All right. So I'd like to make a motion to accept all the findings and facts and documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have that second, I'm sorry. Second by Dave. And vote is unanimous. Six, nothing. And I'd like now to ask for a motion to close public hearing.
I move.
Second.
Vote on the closing?
Aye.
And now assign voting members. Bial, Dave Nuttley, Chris Murphy, John August, and Kenneth Dixon. And he'll now make a, like to entertain a motion to close discussion.
I move.
So John and Ken, okay? Let's have a vote on closing discussion. Any further discussion by the applicant or the board?
No, thank you.
All right, Al?
Case number 2024-31, Kevin Gell, Jr., Sir was Attorney William B. Kroll Esquire and Michael G. Donovan Esquire. The owner of the property located at 35 Pilgrim Road, assesses map 14, possibly U10 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, has been granted a special permit for non-conforming structure and usage, 325, attachment to table to area regulation, to raise and replace the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325, 54, and 52 of Mass. General Law 40A, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the Gale and Dietrich and related cases, as it is an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, and no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. On the pre-existing non-conforming lot, and has, and as a proposed structure, will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30th, Labor Day of any year. Secondly, that for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public street or road. And three, subject to review of the approval of Department of Health regarding the septic system, the violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass. Law, General Law, or the chapter 40A, Section 7, Howard zoning bylaws, as they may be amended from time to time.
I don't think we have any additional conditions, correct? All right, I'd like to hear a second for that motion right now.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion by the board? Guys, a vote on the motion, please.
Aye.
So the approval, five to nothing.
Thank you very much.
You have your...
Thank you.
Approval. Thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Attorney Kroll, I'll have Rachel send you a copy of the draft decision, just to make sure that we haven't missed anything particularly on the setbacks and so forth.
Thank you. I'll take a look at it.
And drive safely, guys, and good luck with the project, and...
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gell, I understand, I'm misunderstanding, you say you lived in England? Did you mention England?
Needham.
Needham, that's close enough.
Hingham.
Hingham. We got another one out there?
Hingham, Hingham. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Attorney Kroll, all these people tonight, didn't anyone have a chart to put up to show us things? This was gonna have been...
I had, I had a better story, but it would have been 15 minutes, and I said, no.
Well, that's not gonna work.
Mr. Dixon, he's not gonna like that one. Another time, wait till the next Pilgrim Road.
Good night.
Good night. Are you, are you, you Matt?
I am.
Okay. So, guys, I just like to make an adjustment on the, on our agenda here, and just before your approval minutes, I'd like to just go to new business, okay? And actually go to correspondence and briefings first, okay? So I want to delay, delay the public who's here to discuss this tonight, okay? So if you'd like to, you can have a seat.
Ryan, does that require a motion to adjourn?
Yes, actually, I'd make a motion that we adjust the agenda tonight, and I'd just go to correspondence and briefings first. Is there any discussion on that? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor doing that?
Aye.
All right, okay. Opposed? Opposed? No, I appreciate that. But have a seat if you like, okay? But we're gonna be discussing this first, before we entertain any comments from the public?
Very good.
Okay? So when I read, Matt, it's pronounced Sutton, correct?
It is.
Okay, thank you. I read Matt's letter initially. I had, I had some concerns about the letter, as far as its tone, but, you know, I think I came to realize that perhaps that may be the result of Matt not understanding, you know, what our roles are here, and what we can, what is under our jurisdiction. I appreciate his passion regarding the environment. I grew up in a town, Needham, Mass, and in the 50s and early 60s, it was kind of a sleepy community outside of, outside of Boston. And I can remember, adjacent to my neighborhood, there was a street called Chestnut Street. And when I was a kid, when I'd ride my bike, typically times a year, there'd be chestnuts all over the road. And that went all the way down pretty much to the center of town. It was, it was a lovely environment, you know, as I look back now. Recently, I had been there years, I drove back to the town and went through that area and even my old neighborhood. And like every community out there, you know, I think because of the economy, because in this town, it was originally built, it was after World War II, a lot of homes being built for veterans and so forth, and so there was smaller construction. And today, in Needham, it's considered an upscale community, and where houses could be torn down and built with larger ones to satisfy the needs of the community, it's taking place. And all those trees that were on the road, most of them are, you know, were gone. In my own neighborhood, where a lot of construction was done, it, you know, nothing looked the same. It wasn't the same community they went back to. But things change. You know, the, the economy moves, the economy changes. Now, the one thing about Matt's letter was that I myself, I don't think other members of the board had ever dealt with Chapter 87. So it, I did immediately, and of course, I'll send to all the board members, copies of Chapter 87. And like to, and we received, and all the board members, you have received a lot of correspondence from emails that involve the town highway director in gathering background material on Chapter 87, how it should be applied. And today, Ken and I met with town administrator Joe Powers, along with Lincoln, Link, the town director, and his first in his department, I forget Brian's last name, who was the, is the local, you know, town authority regarding, regarding trees, et cetera. And we had a meeting, and we discussed 87. The goal for that meeting was for me to understand further what, if any, role the Board of Appeals had regarding trees on a lot. And, and Ken was there, and anytime, he can be happy to, to discuss this. But basically, as a result of the meeting, because the, the applications that become, that come before us, come before the board, like tonight's applications, they're all regarding permitting issues, and we got, and also involve other regulatory agencies, whether it's the Board of Health, conservation, historic, et cetera. And in our deliberations, you know, for every, all the information I've received, and for the discussion with, with the town administrator today, as well as the town highway director, as the situation of trees on a lot has nothing to do with any of the permitting that we are allowed to, you know, govern, to make decisions on, this board has no authority to discuss anything regarding the status of a tree. We cannot make a regulation that this tree can or cannot be removed. That all has to do between the ownership of the tree, you know, and actually, the tree warden, the agent of the town, which is the highway director. Now, this particular issue came up on Cross Street, originally. The town director, highway director, at my request, and his team went out, inspected the tree. They actually found the tree to be damaged, and indicated initially the fact that if they were the homeowner, they probably would be recommending that at some point here, it needs to be removed. They also found the fact that it was, it was very much in private property. All right? So from the director's, highway director's point of view, under 87, the only control he has is if he felt it was deemed necessary to trim the tree in order to protect line of sight for traffic and so forth, or to, or might, if it in any way interfered, you know, with the public right of way, which this tree does not. But other than that, all that we, from what they deem that we can do as a board, is that if an issue comes up with a tree, we can inform the abudders or people that have a vested interest in the situation, that they can certainly petition or request a review by the highway director. And that's all we can possibly do, but it cannot be part of any motion or part of a decision that we make regarding a permit under the zoning laws and MGL Chapter 40A laws of the state. Ken, would you like to...
Well, I'll just add that we met with Powers, our city administrator. We also met with the, we have a tree warden. We met with the tree warden, what was his name?
The de facto, Brian, but he's...
No, wait. We met with a tree warden.
Lane Cooper.
We met with a tree warden, Brian, and we met with this highway superintendent, who he is an arborist, who he defers to for guidance, but the tree, we have a tree warden, because that was part of your letter.
De facto, correct. And that's Lane, that's Lane Cooper.
Right. So there, we met with three different people today.
No, I met with two. And Joe, I'm sorry, yeah.
And they made it very clear that trees are out of the scope of the authority of this board. We cannot condition, we cannot require, it's outside of the scope of this board.
Correct.
And so, and I kind of, I'm actually appreciative that you brought it to us, because we didn't know that it was or wasn't. So we spent time today finding out that concerns, such as yours, that it can potentially be very legitimate concerns, this is not the right place. That's what we, that's what we learned today.
And I spent prior to that hours researching everything and contacting the authorities. So, that being said, you know, I'd like to, any other discussion on that by the board so far? Then...
I mean, the only comment that I would make, you know, again, is I do appreciate that, you know, the, this was brought to our attention, I learned a lot. I actually even went to the Massachusetts Tree Warden and Forests Association website and learned the history. But having said that, I found the letter very offensive.
Well...
So that, before we open up the public comment, is there any other discussion by the board right now?
No.
Okay. So I'm gonna open up this to public comment. Matt?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I've been writing letters to the town for, I think the better part of 40 years, and, and probably more lately. And I wanted to thank you for inviting me here, because you're the first board to ever be more interested in what I had to say. So I'm grateful. I'm sorry if you were feeling offended. It was a tourist letter, I'll admit. I've done a little homework, but it... I've done a little homework, but the terse-ness was, well, generated by the two trees across the way here, that the town wants to tear, cut down in front of the library.
But why does that affect our board, that you find yourself being terse?
Well, I'll get to that, I'll get to that. The reason, my reaction to the trees planted by the town, which was acknowledged at the meeting, having taken some petitions to zoning boards before in my life, you go with your hat in hand, sort of, and I did think that the fellow might have made a positive comment about the trees remaining for what he got out of, before you that evening. Of course, he didn't. And I think that kind of triggered me a little bit, because I've been trying for eight, nine months to make, see what can happen across the street, where they want to cut down the two trees in front of the library. And so I've been doing a little homework, and first, there are a couple of things I've come up with, but if I may, I brought some things for you.
Does this involve things that we regulate for the board?
Well, actually, in my reading, the state, the law, the law does mention the zoning board, more often the planning board, but there is a mention of the zoning board, so I'm not...
I will entertain, if it's relevant to the zoning board, I'll entertain it.
Well, thank you. It's, I'm not the lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, I just tell you what I read. But if I may, my pitch is to use my time with you...
Thank you.
...to lever an opportunity for bona fide tree ward...
Thank you.
...in Harwich. I've met with Link Hooper. Link Hooper, I think, will honestly tell you, he's not a tree warden. The law specifies what's required for a tree warden if the population is over 10,000, and...
By the way, Matt, I provided this plan here to our board prior to the meeting.
Great. So I wanted, and I, and I brought a little more for you. I did put my copy machine to work, so I brought that to leave with the board if they're interested in looking at it.
Okay.
A little more detail, but when I went to the post office this morning, I got the Harwich Conservation Trust bulletin for this month, and therein it was a piece about Link Thatcher. He used to be the tree warden. He was followed by Carley Francis here. And then at some time, after Carley left, the selectmen decided they didn't need one. And that map will reflect that. You can see Harwich is surrounded by towns that have tree wards, and has doesn't. It has somebody that's been named the tree warden, and I bet you, my sense is that Link Hooper would be pleased to submit, you know, withdraw from that responsibility. That was what I got out of the conversation with him, it was just voice down. He's not qualified, I can flat out say that, based on what I've read.
But he has, he has an assistant who's an arborist. Just so you know.
I can't speak to that.
I can't.
Let me tell you, okay.
I can't. Just want you to know that he does rely on his viewpoint.
Well, having gotten in touch with the Tree Wardens Association of Massachusetts, which curiously has an office in Brewster, I got, I've got some information here about what a tree warden in fact is, and it's not just somebody who is an arborist.
I appreciate that.
It is somebody who wants to manage the moment, the interests of the person who wants to cut the tree down, the tree that may be healthy, the tree that may be diseased, the tree that may be dead. It requires a certain amount of knowledge, it's just not a, "Come on in here, tell me what you think of this tree." And that's a certain relationship with the town boards, that a tree warden can provide at that meeting, last time that generated this letter. I'm sure the tree warden would have submitted some comment, something that would have...
He actually, for a zoning board, he would not be asked, because the trees and the application of Chapter 87 have nothing to do with this board, given the fact that the application before us have to do with the zoning regulations and other regulatory boards, and the issues that involve that. And prior to my investigating it further, and prior to our meeting with the town officials today, you know, it, I think, you know, everyone needs to be educated to the fact that there is a process in town where Link Hooper and his department will get involved with issues and questions, but as far as on anything that comes before our board in the future, we're just going to make the recommendation that they seek the advice and the services of the town highway director to determine any conflict or any questions on the status of a tree.
Well, I used this meeting as a way to start this process.
Sure, I understand.
So, you know, you're the first base, and I've got to get home.
Well, you know, you sent us a letter, you sent us in a letter, and out of, you know, full respect for the time you spent in doing the letter, again, you know, I was initially, you know, I was disturbed that, or at the tone of it, it didn't seem to be cooperative on the whole thing, and accused us of just rubber stamping people's applications. Matter of fact, the meeting you were at, or I don't know who that meeting you're talking about, we had denied relief on an application. So you made that comment in a meeting in which we sent the applicant packet. So it, I particularly found, I particularly found that, you know, interesting, that you picked that meeting to point out that we were rubber stamping applications.
Fair enough.
And we do not.
Fair enough.
And that's where I think that you sent your message off on a poor tone, and it could have been more constructive on just bringing our attention Chapter 87.
I stand.
And I would recommend that you follow that technique as you approach other departments in town, because they may perhaps find a little more cooperation with you and listen to your ideas, if they feel there's a cooperative tone regarding how to resolve the needs of this town for a tree warden. And I'm not going to dispute that. I mean, certainly, 90% of the communities in this state have found it necessary.
Right.
So I can appreciate your passion to see this town hire a tree warden.
Thank you. Yeah, I have that passion. I've been, you know, I started here in 1957, and I used to remember plywood going up on the windows in Harwichburg. So I have a long view.
Absolutely.
I lived in Westchester, I've seen development rolling, rolling right along, in 25 years I was there. Things change, I admit, but, you know, unlike Westchester, where you can run up into Rockland County and Putnam County, here, you got to run into the water. So my sense of development and all the ancillary stuff that goes with it, which includes your board's responsibilities to, you know, make something happen where there's not a whole lot that needs to change, we're not tipping the bucket upside down, you know, I'm respectful of that.
Right, and I agree with you the fact that now, when the issue comes up, the people who are questioning what's going to happen with the tree, we now be able to give them that they have a process and educate them how they can handle that process going forward, so they don't feel the fact that we're just ignoring their needs.
Well, I appreciate your, I appreciate your taking the time to respond to my letter. I'm sorry, it was terse. I have a certain amount of anxiety about the power structure in this town, because it seems to default to construction. I guess maybe that's where I'm picking on you a little bit, but the town does default to construction. It's, it doesn't seem to readily consider unintended consequences going down the road. And this is my anxiety at the moment.
Sure.
When somebody wants to spend 115,000 across the street to cut down a couple of trees because the bricks are rippled, you can imagine the mindset, I think, is in play there, that would want to do that in the first place.
No, I understand, and, you know, certainly, like my old town, where those chestnut trees are no longer there, you know, it, every tree has importance, and I grant you that, and if there's to be change regarding how builders are allowed to construct, it has to be based upon the code. And if the code needs to be changed, but this board, we have to follow the code we have.
I understand.
And yourself, as a builder, in your, I think in your career, would probably not appreciate if a board decided to ignore a code, that you had counted on the planning of your development, of the house that you want to build, you had counted on a set of facts, which is the code, and if the planning board or the zoning board decide to, "Yeah, fine, that's a code, but we don't like what you're doing,"
Right.
And couldn't document why they couldn't, they were turning you down based upon the code, that'd be a very poor structure.
It would.
So this board here, we value the code, there are some times, I have to admit, that I am not, like, thrilled of what might be going on with the project, but the attorneys present their case, they meet the needs of the code...
Right.
And that's what we have to follow here.
So, in conclusion, thank you for writing the letter, because it started the conversation.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Right?
And I'll probably follow up with the planning board and with the town, because I actually think the information you got today from Link Hooper is not factually correct, and you'll find in the booklet there...
Again, we got most of it from Mr. Powers, he was just merely in town.
You'll find that, I hope he will call the town attorney, who's probably more of an expert on Chapter 87, I think.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Yep. Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And thanks for letting us know about 87.
Okay. Have a good evening, appreciate it.
Right, I'll try. Thank you, sir. Okay. Just remind us all that we're still on, we're still on a public meeting and still being recorded. Approval of minutes. We have the August minutes and the September minutes. Did anybody have any corrections they want to offer?
I didn't see anything. I'll make a motion to approve the August minutes as published.
Okay. You second it, John? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any questions on, changes on that, those minutes? I failed to see something myself, I didn't...
I didn't see anything.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Al? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, because I wasn't present.
Nothing else, I, actually, I was, if you can? Okay. The meeting schedule.
Second to last one, probably not doable.
On the, the other one, we changed as well, this year, because that's Thanksgiving Eve, November 26th.
Yeah, December 31st is New Year's Eve.
I'll be drunk.
You're being recorded, dude.
All right, so...
Before we go to that, is the next meeting on Thursday, the 21st? Do I have it wrong in my count?
No, you have it right, it's the, it's the Thursday before Thanksgiving.
Right.
And it's on a Thursday and on a Wednesday. And that's a result of the fact that the meeting rooms were not available.
Yeah.
So November's meeting is...
Is when?
November 21st.
Is November 21st.
And it's a Thursday?
Thursday.
Yep, I got it, good.
I have last year's schedule here, or this year's schedule here.
Yep.
Yes, I think, and I thought Rachel would be here, but I also had a question, Brian, on this, the first one, January 29, 2025, why, why is the cutoff December 12? That's unusual.
Yeah, okay, so we'll find out about that.
It's like seven weeks prior to the meeting. What was that?
Oh, the cutoff. It's like seven weeks prior.
The filing deadline.
Yeah, that, I'm sure that's an error.
Because the filing deadline for Janu-, or...
She probably means January.
Yeah, I don't...
She may not. I mean, it's always a month ahead of time, and maybe because of the holidays...
Yeah.
I'll find out about that, now...
That is what we approved last year. I realized that we approved the following January's meeting was on last year's one.
That doesn't give the people much of a break to get things in.
Yeah.
All right, so let's find out about that, and, you know, of course, we're not meeting on New Year's Eve.
Because the following year, what popped my eye is, for 2025, it's December 31 cutoff. So why in '24 is it two and a half weeks earlier?
It's probably, probably an error, but we'll find out. So, December...
The problem with the December meeting is if you make it a week before, it's Christmas Eve.
Yeah, but we're not meeting New Year's Eve.
Or Christmas Eve.
Or Christmas Eve.
Yeah, a lot of people traveling.
Yeah. So to me, it would either have to be a Monday or a Tuesday to make it. You have two Wednesdays in a row, bad.
Well, gentlemen, I'm going to recommend we may find a change, or we have no December And we give people advance, a lot knows there's no December meeting, there's no December meeting.
That's why...
Huh?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so...
This happened other years, so...
Yes.
All right, so right now, why don't we say that regarding December, unless we have an, because we can't do it the 24th, all right?
The whole week's really not good, so...
Whole week's not good. I mean, there's a possibility of December 30th on a Tuesday. Does anyone, what are your feelings about that? I just assume at this point, just eliminate December.
I have no conflict at this point.
Huh?
I said I, on the December 30th Tuesday, I have no conflict at this point, but...
But it's a year from now.
It's a year from now.
Yeah, it's a year from now.
But it's a year from now, yes. Well, he's a man who plans out his day, all right? So regardless...
I plan my 2026 vacation, but...
All right, so right now, we're looking at December 30th.
Are we looking at December, you're saying December 30th?
It's a Tuesday, or no meeting.
I'm okay with the 30th.
Yeah, tentatively, I'd be okay with the 30th, but...
Okay. All right.
I do think that week between New Year's, Christmas and New Year's, a lot of people bug out.
Yeah, no, and so...
It might not be a very useful meeting to have.
Can I have, first of all, we're going to propose the 30th on a Tuesday, but can I have a, I'd like to make a motion that the board allow me to establish either the 30th for a meeting date, or no meeting at all?
So move.
Did I have that?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a second on?
Second.
When is this year's meeting? In December?
Okay.
Two Thursday meetings in a row.
All right, so we've got a question, December 12th, filing date, and I'll get things resolved with either December 30th or no meeting in December. Are you all in favor of that? Okay. So, as amended, can I have a motion to... So as, as amended, can I have a motion to approve the schedule?
Did we, hold on, did we talk about the, the November one though, the Thanksgiving?
Oh, wait a minute. Okay.
Because that's the night. I guess Thanksgiving Eve is not the traditional way to refer to it, but again, generally that's a bad night for everybody.
Yeah, it is. So why don't we, why don't we go make that the nineteenth? The Wednesday before.
This is on, in November?
Yeah.
Instead of the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, instead of the day before Thanksgiving, we go for the nineteenth.
That's a good idea.
All right. Now, everybody think that's okay?
That's for this year?
No, for, for next year.
Talking November nineteenth for the meeting, right?
Yeah. Yeah, right now. So anybody? Okay, all right. So we revise it again. So I'm going to go for the nineteenth, on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That's probably going to impact her date for having the deadlines. You know, that need to be changed. All right.
So you've got November twenty-first of this year.
Yeah, we should have Attorney Quill here for these discussions because he's, he does half the cases.
Yeah, November twenty.
True.
You know.
Yep, and then December nineteenth.
Got to make sure, you know, we got to, we got to bring him into the fold. Okay.
Oh, the date in December that was decided upon?
Well, either, either the thirtieth.
I fly out the day after.
Or no meeting.
Changed my departure date. I was going to leave.
One of the other.
I'm not going to leave until the twenty-sixth. Yeah, I'm not leaving until the twenty-sixth.
It's going to be a tough meeting, even the thirty-first, that's New Year's Eve and.
Yeah, we're not doing the thirty-first. That's not happening.
Florida, we went to Europe last year and this year.
Thirty is not much better either, but.
No.
We could be going with no meeting in December.
Oh, maybe for a week.
I'm in favor of saying I don't.
You know, so.
Yeah, this year, seven weeks.
All right, so all those. On the revised dates here going November nineteenth, along what we, what we discussed about December two thousand twenty-five. Go ahead.
Again, to try to allow people time, if we went without a meeting in December, or the typical December meeting, would it make sense to push the November meeting to like the first week of December? To allow people to get stuff.
Ooh, good idea.
And then skip the December one. And that way there's no two-month period where there's no meeting.
Boy, that's a great.
December, December three?
That's a really great idea.
December three.
So we don't do, we, November meetings gets, gets changed altogether. We go the first week in December.
So November twenty or twenty-five, we're not having a meeting in November, correct?
What we're saying now is we skip, we blow.
And move that to like December something.
Early December, clear everything out before.
Yeah, we actually do like the second, first or second week in December.
Sure.
All right, so we'll make it, you know, I'll go for the first or second week. I'll talk to Rachel. One or the other, what fits her meeting rooms.
That way no one has to wait eight weeks for, right?
All right, so no, no.
And then the January meeting would be hell.
Yeah, and then the January meeting would be normal time.
No November meeting.
Eight weeks worth of, to be at midnight.
Yeah, but eight weeks, two weeks of holiday.
True. So we're looking at, okay, so we've just changed December.
We're proposing the twelve-three.
So twelve-three or twelve-ten.
Twelve-ten.
I think twelve-ten might be the better route. That way you have plenty of time.
More, more could get in and be addressed.
Yeah, let's, let's, right now, let's shoot for December tw- ten. Okay, we all squared away. So the changes are eliminate November, move that to the tenth of December, eliminate the December meeting. And on the schedule here is, Dave just pointed out to me, it's to be January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And on that topic, by the way, and this is on the schedule, I would like to attend the next meeting with a virtual. You and I had talked about the importance of doing that.
Yes.
You arranged that?
So. That's a, I didn't get it down on the schedule. Thanks for reminding me. All right, so anyways, guys, we learned at the meeting we had regarding the forty-B education, it was brought up that a board member, I also heard it elsewhere too, but a board member can attend virtually and be part of the meeting and, and not have to do the, you know, documentation or whatever, all that stuff. Can attend the meeting that way virtually. As long as one, there's a quorum, which is three, you know, physically in, in the meeting, and that quorum is going to include the chair. So for some reason, if I'm not at the meeting or the chair's not at the meeting, you know, then at that point, your being virtual doesn't work. All right, now.
It would if there were four people.
No. The chair has to be there.
In order for a virtual meeting?
Where, yes, in order for your, as a member going virtually, that you're counted as being at, the chair has to be at the meeting.
Oh.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. I'll double check that, but that's, that's, that's the deal that I understand. All right? So the chair cannot be virtual. He has to be conducting the meeting. That's what it comes down to. In order to have, you know, so I can't appear virtual.
Understood.
Now, I don't know whether or not that means there's an appointed chair that night, but, you know, I'll, I'll find out. But that's, that's the deal. And, and what I proposed is that, and it didn't get set up for tonight, well, I think it didn't, is that I don't want the first time that we're doing this virtually again be on a, on a, on a key meeting such as a forty-B review. So those who feel they may be traveling, you know, in two thousand, next year typically. And we don't have any clue yet regarding when we're going to have scheduled forty-B meetings. Right? That we, we get a chance to practice it upfront and get used to it. Now, Chris and I were both, and Al, we were all initially on the board here, well, went through COVID and we've done the virtual meetings. And, and initially sometimes it was like, you know, problems with, with audio, whatever. And that was all controlled out of our homes by Dave Ryer as the chair. And getting the coordination down with the town, I'm sure would be a lot easier. But I would like to go through and test it out and we'll get experience using their laptops, computers at home on a virtual meeting.
Do you log in like members of the public or is it a different login?
All right, so now there's, we have two options on this. We can, as I understand it, and I'm going to check with Emily, we can make it virtual strictly for the board member and, and not the public. Whereas in a virtual meeting with the public, they'd be able to speak and go through all that. Okay? And, or just make it strictly the virtual for the member who's off-site.
I was actually talking more just to technology.
Oh, okay. I just want you to know what.
You know, because we have, people can normally, uh, view a meeting, right?
People are watching on channel eighteen, but they're not, they can't participate.
And that's how we should, I think that's how we should do it.
This is, right now it's just strictly being recorded.
Right.
If it was live, we would have turned this thing on over here. Okay?
But we have that.
The public is involved.
But the, the public.
Not now, no, not right now. During its, an actual meeting, the top, the public can comment if we have to go.
If we go virtual, we have options of whether we just still make it TV only.
Just to keep the complexity down, unless we're forced to include the public, it should be just a board member.
We have that option, right.
Point is to have the meeting.
Right.
And not having to postpone the meeting.
Or miss a meeting for a forty-B.
Yes.
Right. So that's, that's, that's the goal here. And my goal is that everyone, you know, you know, except for the chair, at, at times, practice doing it. Okay?
And again, I'm, I'm willing to say that in the November meeting, Brian, I'm willing to do that.
Sure. And I'll try to get things set up for November.
I am.
All right.
And I'm going to suggest that it should be just for the board. It should not be for the public. The public, if they want to comment, they can come here as they do today. Nothing prohibits that.
Correct. No, that's absolutely.
So that's why I'm hoping that we'll do it that way.
Yeah, and I, I think in a meeting that's going to be as complex as a forty-B meeting may be, it just is going to be easier to, you know, manage the meeting if we don't have a lot of people.
Online.
Online.
Comment.
I agree.
I, I, because that would open up just a ton.
We all agree.
All right, we all agree.
All right. All right. Okay.
I agree.
Pilot agreement.
Comprehensive permit application review, nothing for tonight. Our current application was sent to the attorney for review. And I think we discussed this briefly last, last meeting. Because two years ago or so, we did, the board did approve a new version of the, of the CPA along with fee structure. I'm not questioning the fee structure, but Rachel, in doing her homework, looked at the old version and realized there are a lot of questions or requirements in an application on the old version which aren't on the new one. So whether we, it was an error? I have no idea. But it's been sent to the attorney for review to make sure we have a, a proper CPA application that's going to meet the needs of both the applicant as well as, as well as the community.
To that point though, like the first case we had today, that application was incomplete. They didn't fill it in.
Why did we even hear that case?
Yeah, should it not get to us? To me, it shouldn't get to us if the application's not filled out completely. There were whole sections left blank.
Yeah, the, I think the, but what was missing in the application, the information was on, on the site plans. So I just, you know, it, it, I'm not, not disputing that.
Not a correct application. That's the reason we have the application. So if we don't dig far within.
Right. I don't, I don't totally disagree with you.
Yeah.
It, it, it could have been, we could have easily shut it down. But the case was published, you know, it was, was sent in the, right up in, in a legal publication. So that particular point, we're now accepting the meeting.
But should.
Had he, had he not had the updated information that he did from the, for the plan, then that, that would have shut down approving.
I guess that's what I'm saying is, to me, it shouldn't have been published.
Right.
When he turned it in, he should have been giving it back to him and said, sir, your application's incomplete.
And I, I will make that, I will make that note to Rachel.
Because the other side of that, Brian, is, man, I was compelled to turn that application down tonight and, until he gave us additional, just because it was an incomplete application, whether it was published or not. So we have to hear the case because it's published. But here, you know what? It's not, it, for us, it's not in a position to be approved.
I, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm sorry, just added that. Like, I'm defending, I don't want to, like, in defense of Rachel as well, is I, I think it shouldn't fall on her shoulders to pick through the drawing to complete an applicant's application. They need to, you know, when we get into like this national fact, they're the ones that need to represent the facts. As, as they're presenting it, not us assuming, or Rachel assuming.
Yeah, and I can't speak for Rachel, but we, we did have conversations where she expressed her frustration on, on, on getting this application forward. And when he commented that he just received requests for this, that comment came three weeks ago. He was, it just didn't just happen.
Who makes the decision to publish it?
Rachel.
Okay, so if she got an application that wasn't complete, she shouldn't have published it.
She did, out of, out of trying to help a resident or, you know, contractor get through, you know, get, get through the motions. And I think it was just her being kind and just trying to, and, and hope that the applicant would eventually come up with the proper information and go forward. But I will instruct her, going forward, if it's not complete, we, we could choose to deny it.
My comment regarding that is actually supportive of Rachel.
Yeah, no, that's. No, I understand, I understand.
Falling on Rachel's shoulders.
But she was basically.
Well, we need more instruction then for her. It shouldn't, it shouldn't fall on her shoulders.
And if she typically flack, we would support her.
Absolutely. She, and she knows that. She knows that. Okay. So anyways, hopefully next meeting we'll have an updated or confirmed, or a current one CPA. Okay? What we have now is, is what we're going with unless there's a changes offered on opinion from the town council. In the old business? So that being it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
That's now eight eighteen.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
They're good.
Trying to go easy.
So, Chris, you can now turn off the recording. Just press that button again.